Thanks everybody for being here. Let's see, we had a special guest, right?
He is, so he won't know. Justin, can you hear us?
I can hear him, yes.
He's got his microphone up. Let's see here. Volume up. See?
Justin, it looks, Justin, it looks like your, um, mic might be muted.
Uh, no, I'm, I'm unmuted here.
There you go.
Yeah.
Try now.
Can you hear me?
Let me try the real time speakers. Can you hear us loud?
How about now?
I can hear you, yes.
How long does this take? Speaker, echo cancelling, let's take one down.
Okay, Justin, how about now?
I can hear you, yes. Can you hear me?
We've got you, so, so, stop that.
That's all right, yes.
All right, we have Justin Ball, we're gonna interrupt the agenda just a little bit, let him go first, he has a prior commitment here in a few minutes. He's gonna speak about the TCRS, which stands for something.
Consolidated Retirement.
Consolidated, yes, that's what I said, okay. So go ahead, Justin, thank you.
Okay, yes, uh, so what you have before you is a resolution to add a sick leave plan provision to your TCRS plan. And essentially what this would do would, would allow your employees, your current employees moving forward, it's not retroactive, but, uh, current employees moving forward as they retire, they could turn in their unused sick leave towards retirement service credit. And so basically the way we do that calculation is every 20 days of unused sick leave counts as one month of service credit. Uh, and then that is rolled into their calculation for their retirement benefit. Uh, so it would increase their retirement benefit, uh, depending on the number of days unused sick leave that they have. So that's the resolution that you, you have before you. And so as you, uh, you know, if you choose to vote that in, then that will essentially add the plan provision to your plan and allow your employees to, to do that, uh, to turn in that unused sick leave for retirement service credit.
Okay, so this started about a year ago when a staff member brought it to our attention that the library employees were not offered a benefit, um, which is the benefit that Justin just covered with us, whereby, um, they could have their unused accrued sick leave applied to, or certified to be applied to their, um, TCRS benefit. And, um, what is it? The, at that time, the board voted to request an audit be done. The county HR department and finance department had that audit done. They came back and, um, said to us, we didn't see the report, but they shared that it was gonna be a nominal cost that could be spread over, um, you know, over a large period of time and that, um, that they supported us moving forward with it. And their recommendation was, um, Jacqueline Johnson provided the resolution, that is the fifth page from the end of your, um, board packet. And, um, and then just a letter to the commission letting them know that this is a decision that we had implemented. Uh, once this is signed and delivered or received by the TCRS, it is implemented, is that correct, Justin?
Yes.
That is, yeah, so whatever date that you all sign this, it would, anyone that retires essentially after that date could then turn in sick leave to be counted towards their, uh, retirement credit.
Any questions? We've been waiting on this.
Thank you, Justin.
Yes.
Any questions, okay.
Thank you.
Is it, okay, thanks, Justin.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we get to the, to this.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah.
Um, okay, you have the approval of the minutes we need to look at for last month's meeting, the new package. Motion to approve is in your second. All those in favor?
One correction, but I think Summer already has it.
I can.
The call to order.
Yes.
Any, um... See further discussion? Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those who have a say. Okay, the minutes are... Proven as... Let's see, um, introduction of guests and public comments, has anybody signed up?
Yeah.
Okay. No comments. Now, the moment you've been waiting for, I have a 45-minute press committee chair in Fort Worth. Like to welcome Dustin here for his first official in person. With a lot of flesh. Glad he's here and off to a stellar start. I wanted to thank Anjene for her interim directorship, she's done an absolutely fantastic job.
Yes.
She's been enamored with her impressive organizational skills. She presented her budget to the county, which was also, actually, we just told that. May the 27th, we're having a ribbon cutting for the Bookie Monster, automatic handling. We can work here with the 21 guns salute. That's at 12 noon on Tuesday, May 7th, the week of today, if you want to attend that. I guess there's, I don't know, is it just that, the, oh, under cookies. Let's see, on Friday, the 23rd, there's a Friends of the Library Foundation, uh, floor, and the board of trustees. Dustin kind of having a little add-on discussion on how we can all work cohesively as a little subunit to kind of work on the strategic plan. We've had one meeting, this will be the second meeting, to make sure we're all kind of know what we're doing then. So there'll be more for that later on. Attended the staff meeting last week. Had a nice, Dustin's joined us and it was very fun with all the staff, everybody. Seemed to have good camaraderie and play games and it was just a lot of fun, so I think those were, again, rocked a good start. We've got, uh, some nominees for new trustee members that will be voted on. Sean was approved at the last commission meeting and they postponed the others until the June meeting. So we'll hope to have a full slate officially that time. We talked about the officers' nominations for chair vice chair and so, secretary. So those will be voted on next, next month's meeting as well.
But you can do it this month.
We can do it.
Want to?
We can do it now. We nominated Richard as vice chair, Lee as chair, and Summer as secretary. So, officers. So can I reiterate motion?
Aye.
Go ahead, go ahead and move. If you want to, that's, that's good with me.
Sure, the chair, I'll make a, I'll make a motion that we, uh, approve the, uh, individuals for the positions that was nominated by the nominee committee, that being, uh, Greg, uh, excuse me, uh, Richard Falk as vice chair, uh, Greg, Greg Field as chair, and Summer as secretary.
And you wanna ask for any other nomination?
Any other nomination? Hearing none.
No one.
Only one.
I'm second.
Okay. And this is actually for this next calendar year till the 20...
July 1st.
July 1st. Till 2026. So all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Very well, motion. As a formality. Here, so, uh, let's see, my last comment, I've attended the Okoye Region River Regional Semi-Annual Board Chair Meeting in Athens on March, on May 7th. And that was, uh, with Liz Shrek who was there, hitting that, we had, uh, seven libraries. They were represented by Loud, Ray County, Roan County, and Blount County. It was kind of, just kind of get together, I do that once a year, I do it twice a year. Talked about how we all did things similarly, uh, just kind of general things. You know, but it was very informative to go to Athens, to have been to Athens, it's worth the day, putting it out back. That it. Liz suggested that we, some important things here to keep in, for building needs and make sure we keep our budget requests to the county, stay in good communication with the county. Make local governments aware of what we need, add maintenance improvements to our, to the strategic plan. And also ma- maintain a plan for the queues, I think we have all of this, all this, we had a group conference recently. Anyway, that's a good meeting just to hear, and we got to share ideas about how they do things, how we do things. I showed our newsletter to the little lady from, what's it, Ray County, I think she was blown away, she had no idea.
Roan County.
Was it what, Roan County?
It was Roan, mhm.
She had no idea that the Maryville Library was this big. I was kind of shocked. It was a great, great meeting, Liz did a good job, it was just a nice trip, so... That concludes my report. Then I wanted to, another quick change is to let interject here with Dustin so he can do a quick status summary of his report and all the rest of it.
Great. Thank you, Chair Greg Field. So I wanted to reach out and I gave everyone a handout that's present of, uh, kind of contact points. It's a status summary of what I understood that the board has requested of me from the workshop in April. And so I wanted to make sure that I laid out, uh, kind of points that I've been trying to focus my, uh, efforts on. And that includes putting myself out there to make sure that I'm learning, um, hearing the norms of this community, this library, the staff, the volunteers. And also making sure that I hold as many meetings as I can to get to know everyone in the community to help, you know, bolster the library as much as possible. And, uh, despite this being day two, I, I really enjoy working. And so since I moved here, I've held 14 meetings presently with different members of the board, uh, the commission, uh, organizations, the friends, the foundation, and, uh, members of the community. So I'd like to continue that organization, uh, push to kind of get to know the public a little better, get to know the community that I serve. I wish to continue introducing myself to additional, uh, elected officials. Uh, thank you again to Mr. Stewart for, uh, offering to help me, uh, get introduced to the Okoye Commission. Um, Maryville as well is another one that I have my sights on. Um, I'd like to get to know different kinds of various organizations inside the city and the county. Um, I do have a meeting here in the next couple of weeks with Rotary to kind of introduce myself to them as a guest. Um, I'd like to get to know more Friends and Foundation members as we move along, outside of just the board, hopefully. Um, I'd like to get to know the staff better. I, I've had already great interactions getting to know just some of the little nuances that we have, from people interested in softball to, um, different things about plants and such. So, um, in my continued growth, I do see the layout, trying to continue working on a focus of a strategic plan. I've been, um, as I've been speaking to more and more people, it's very evident that, uh, something that we're hoping to achieve is direction. And I think that direction is needed to be, um, written out, thought about strategically, and especially, um, communicated to with the public to make sure that I have, um, full buy-in, not just from a certain select group of stakeholders, but the public at large. And so I'd like to start proceeding with, uh, laying the groundwork for a timeline, hopefully maybe with the strategic plan, to allow us to put it together in the right manner. Um, I don't want to draw it out, but I also want to be able to get enough time to be able to get myself, the knowledge of knowing what I don't yet know essentially, to be able to identify who I need to reach out to so we're not setting ourselves up for failure. And so, um, I, uh, laid out this time plan because I, my anticipated completion date for these kinds of programs is hopefully within the next one to two months, I'll be able to give to the board here, uh, kind of a strategic timeline that's ironed out, that would allow us to give, uh, specific dates so that we can start getting things rolling. Other than that, I also wish to continue learning the workflows. I plan on shadowing in different departments, uh, continuing to work with one-on-ones, having an open door policy at all times. Um, I'll start with the cafe and then I'm gonna move on most likely with patron services, um, just to kind of get to know the different regions and departments and, uh, better understand the staff that I'm working with and get to know the public that come in in those departments as well. Um, I also wish to continue just with a foundational knowledge of, uh, continued learning. And so as I continue moving on with policies and procedures, hopefully I'll be able to continue just, um, hearing, absorbing, and then leading, so... And with that, um, turn it over to any questions, if any of you have any. Is this the right strategic direction that you foresaw in your Able workshop? Excellent. All right.
Important discussion. It's good, it's great, thanks.
Thank you. And seeing in that, um, turn it over to you, sir.
Sure. Let's move to the, to the second part of the director's report, let Anjene.
Yes.
Period.
Being that it is my second day and, um, I would not be able to give an adequate amount of updates to the board, I would like to turn the solo please to Anjene.
Oh, why do you, okay, all right, well, you wanna share this?
No, go ahead.
Okay, all right. Um, about six days ago, the, uh, Madisonville Public Library called and asked if they could have a tour. And it comes to find out that... That the, um, they said their director of 26 years is retiring this year. And 50 years ago, she came to the Blount County Public Library and was so impressed that she wanted her whole staff to see it. They're closing for the day to come here and tour our library. Um, Sarah Smith, our PR, Public Relations Coordinator, will be here that day and she will take them to each department, give out our newsletters and just, um, talk about what we do as well as allow managers the opportunity to speak with them. Um, and we just were blown away that the fact that for a staff development day, another library is closing to see what we do and how we do it. So, so feathering our cap to all our staff from 15 years ago, all the way to present. We feel that when they show up, um, they're gonna be very impressed, very impressed. So that, that put a big smile on everyone's face. Um, okay, all righty, well, summer reading has started. I hope that all of you will participate. You have the, um, newsletter that tells you what all our programs are gonna be. You have the adult reading tracker this year, which is a handy dandy bookmark for the adults. So fill it out, return it, put your name in for the drawing, you'll get some wonderful prizes. Um, what is it, this, oh my gosh, so Dustin's hitting the ground running. Um, he's doing great, so today is his second day. Um, at the next Tuesday, we have the ribbon cutting for the, um, Bookie Monster. Wanna be, give a big shout out to Rebecca Melvin and her patron services team. They have, um, taken this beautiful literary monster by the horns and, um, they are taming and soothing the beast and it will be ready for public consumption come Monday at, oh, Tuesday at, uh, 12 noon. So, um, it has taken a long time to get here. And there's only a few of you left on the board who remember when this project started. First off, thanks for hanging around. Second off, thank you for realizing the need that the library had that would improve its processes and making this part of our future. Um, this was an initiative that even before the four years that it started this run, previous directors had attempted to get started. So this is a huge accomplishment. We could not have done it without, um, your leadership, without the leadership of previous directors. And so, um, it takes a community, and so thank you, we're, we're very excited. Um, what is it, uh, then the following week, on June 2nd, we have the tween ribbon cutting and, um, we were just amazed. We were talking about the tween room, you guys approved it, and, uh, we didn't even do a push. All of a sudden WBIR is reaching out to us and they wanna see it. And at that stage, we hadn't even placed the order for the things. So we're excited, um, to do the ribbon cutting for that one. It will be for, uh, the younger audience, um, but we hope that the mayor will be able to make it. It's just depending on what his schedule. Uh, we already have WBIR confirmed for both those ribbon cuttings. Um, then, and I don't wanna take, uh, anybody's thunder, but there's going to be a wonderful quarterly book sale that Mandy will give us more details on, while in the same week. And then on that Saturday, there's the book sale, as well as Touch a Truck. Touch a Truck is one of our anchor programs for summer reading. It is humongous, and I think that's an accurate statement. At that program, we will be having a meet the director table. And, uh, what is it, we will be offering Via Bonfire, which is a fundraising portal, Harper T-shirts holding up Touch a Truck. Shout out to Zoe Baloo because she created the digital asset for those shirts. So, um, what is it, uh, we will send out a link. And if you guys are interested, it takes about seven to 14 days for the product to arrive. All proceeds go to the Friends, so once again, thank you to the Friends for making all our library dreams come true when it comes to programming. Let's see. And then the second week starts of June, um, what is it? And so, take some time, everything, we have, we altered the date. Um, our previous public relations coordinator, Beth Hall, before she left, had the stroke of genius to say, hey, why don't we make our life a little bit easier and make the newsletter that we do also the summer reading program? And so this is the first iteration of that, and so far, we are all really liking it. So, thank you, Beth Hall. What is it, uh, check it out, please participate. We are excited about what's coming down the pipe. Um, if you have any questions, please reach out to us.
And note that July 24th, our own Greg Greg Field is having a program.
Yes, yeah.
I'm glad you asked, I was, I was gonna ask about that, that myself.
Six p.m. in the main gallery.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sort of a quasi semi-professional amateur musician, but performing a program of music by John Dowling, who was a contemporary of Shakespeare. Stuff was written 430 years ago. Having harpsichordists come in and play, and sing some Elizabethan tear-jerking love songs. So it's very exquisite music, it's secular, there's no other place to do it except outside of church, you know. So I thought the hall would be just fantastic, something I've been wanting to do, so I'm sure it will. Sorry, are you, you're not playing the harpsichord, are you? No, I'm singing. So you're singing, okay, yeah. I'm singing the part of the music, I've got a soprano who's gonna help me on a few of them, I've arranged to do it. And, uh, we're doing a lot of, a lot of his famous greatest hits. So, uh, Dowling was born in the 1500s, he was, uh, played in the court of English Queen Elizabeth I.
Was this a perk of your becoming friends?
You know, we can make that kind of perk available to all of you. Just, I'm sure all of you have a talent.
Yeah, my rates are very expensive. That's what I yell.
Okay, um, what is it, the summer reading program, we have something for every age group this year. We have babies and toddlers, children, four to eight tweens, teens, and adults. We have community, uh, we have, uh, programming happening in-house and we have programming out in the community, so check out the In the Community. That is, um, all that is possible through the hard work of the youth services team. They've got a skating party, a bowling party, a swim party. Which, I'm just too old. And it's in those, but they look like they're gonna have a good time. And I'm excited to, to see them out and about in the community. Um, what is it, uh, wanted to let you know that the summer reading will wrap up. The last day of the summer reading challenge for children is gonna be the 19th, but there will be events afterwards. So, um, and that's just for us, I guess, to get our, uh, statistics in order and ready to share for, for you. We have the Monarch Butterflies coming back. We are starting a teen advisory board. Polly Taylor, our youth service, one of our youth services specialists, she is amazing. She is working magic and she has helped create a place for teens that they feel like they are part of and they wanna take shape. So to be able to have a teen advisory board is something that this library has tried many times. And, um, I think this time it's gonna get up on its feet and it's gonna run and we're excited to see where it goes. Um, with our adult summer reading and our adult reference update, of course, we have the Inquiring Minds section where it tells you the interesting reference questions they've had over the past month. Um, for the adults who wanna participate in the summer reading challenge, you read three books, ebooks, audiobooks, or magazines, complete your tracker, and then submit it for a prize. Um, what is it, we have, uh, a, a program that the lovely Debbie Strademire is going to be instructing. And I just love the, the name of the program, it's called Put a Bird on It. And it is a card-making, mixed multimedia, um, program in the Dorothy Heron Room in June, June 12th. At, uh, one of them, so, uh, if you're interested or you know cardmakers or people who love birds, encourage them to attend. Collections, we're saying farewell to someone who has been with us as a volunteer since 1991. And that is Ms. Marge, and I think it's Bahan, so if I'm not saying that right, someone correct me. I definitely recognize the face, she has been here, as you can tell, longer than I have. But you walk into our processing area and she's there. She's just making it happen. So, uh, Kathy Thompson, um, wrote a page thanking her because it is through volunteers like her that a lot of our processing and a lot of our collection is kept in the best possible shape so that we can keep it for as long as we possibly can. Our collection is much loved. Um, let's see, the cafe this, this month is offering the Hundred Acre Latte. So if you get a chance, please check it out. It is a latte with honey and lavender and, uh, inspired by the Winnie the Pooh story, so check that out. Let's see. The tax season wrapped up in April and the meeting rooms, uh, occupied, were occupied for a total of 441 hours in the month of April. So it was a wee bit busy. Patron services are just amazing with what they can do, um, period. And in this instance, I mean regarding the displays. They are so creative. And have you guys seen the one out there today with the globes and the rain, uh, rainbows? It's, it's a pretty magical team there, um, with great leadership. So uh, let's see. We've got some Louisville locker stats included um for the last. Um, so it is, it has been slow going, but it is starting to build. I'd like to give out um a shout out to our, believe it or not, our accounting clerk too. She has been the steady rock to make sure that she has taken on the responsibility of making sure she, those locker runs happen. So um, thank you to her, Fish Chanci. Um, I want to encourage everyone that, so the PR team has made a summer reading landing page. They did that last year. It was so well received that they did it again this year. What you can find is um on that landing page, which is you go to our homepage, you go to what's happening, you go to news and events, and underneath that it says summer reading. Um, and the summer reading pages, that's where you can, if you want to print off any of your trackers for any of the ages, you can find it there. Um, there's also um a e-newsletter that is specific to summer reading only that can be emailed to you as well as, this year, we're trying something called the Summer Reading Page Turner. It is a daily reader's advisory that will just make a book suggestion from anything that is in our collection. And it will cover everything from children's to nonfiction to easy reader to poetry. So um, check it out. That is something that you have to opt into. So go to the um, summer reading landing page and you will see sign up available on the right-hand side of the screen. After the summer reading program, what we will do is we will um poll those who signed up to see if they would be interested in us continuing it in some way, shape, or form. Um, thank you to the, the PR team for hearing the crazy idea and, and giving it a shot. Uh, thank you for all the staff who made sure that the reads we are suggesting are um family-friendly and um enjoyable. If you guys have any reads that you'd like to recommend, please send it to the bcpl dot P R email address. We'd love it. Okay, um, let's see. You guys are aware of and just took part of the Carol Thomas Memorial um photographs. We'll be sending that over to her family. Um, and we thank you for that. I am happy to say that uh as of five twenty-seven, the Automated Library Return and Sorting Project, Book Return Construction Project will be done and it will be coming off this report. Sorry, I'm a little happy about that. The Kelly Donation slash Team Room, as well as the Harmon Donation slash Children's Area Renovations, will also be closing out in June of twenty twenty-five. So um, again, we believe we're gonna spend everything down, but there is the M O U, so anything not spent will be returned to the foundation.
Okay. That's officially it. This is impressive that you all got this done in, in, in the time that you did and included everything. This is great. I like this.
The PR team could not have done it without every department.
Staff, absolutely.
Every department had stuff, had stuff in early corrected. So thank you to all of you. We couldn't have done it without you.
Really nice.
Yeah.
Also, for some of these events, you need more, we need like all hands on deck, like Touch a Truck, Tomato Jam.
Yes, yes.
Extra help to come in and help.
Sure. So if you board members would love to show up, staff will do.
My point, I'm gonna be here, so if you need.
Absolutely. Mini-Con, Touch a Truck, Tomato Jam. Actually, no, if you guys want to show up and help, we'll accept you anytime. We won't turn you away.
Yeah, the truck.
Exactly what we're supposed to do.
You show up and we'll, we'll give you something to do, yeah. We're, we're good like that.
Well, and you'll also get the opportunity to touch a truck.
Yes.
We'll have the mystery machine and we'll all discover what a scuba truck is.
Scuba truck.
Yes. We will also be there.
Well, moving right along. Uh, let's see, Travis is not here. I don't know if there's a report at the Foundation Board. I'm not seeing one there. There's a meeting that goes today at the Foundation. Instead, he's going to attend and does the. So, okay, moving on to Mandy, Friends of the Library Report.
Right. As Anjane said, the next big thing is our uh June quarterly sale is on Thursday, June fifth. That's the one that's for members only. And then the sixth and the seventh, Friday and Saturday, are open to the public.
Mandy, do you have your elevator?
Well, I was, I was gonna get there. Uh, we have three openings for elevator operators, two on that Thursday. So if any of you are retired and can handle and help, and, and if you haven't done it before, elevator takes one hour and you just ride up and down the elevator and you greet people and you sort of make sure it's orderly getting in the elevator, going down and going back up. But it, it's the first thing I ever did and it's great fun. You get to meet people and thank them for coming and ask them things like, who told you about this? Why are you here and so forth? So, yes, thank you. Um, we do have uh our numbers right now. We're showing about a hundred and forty-five on the record volunteers, which is remarkable. And they tell me we need more volunteers and I say, but you got a hundred and forty-five. Everybody didn't come in the same day. Uh, someone may come in and work for a couple of days in June and not see them again until August. But those are the ones we've got on the roster. So that's a, that's a pretty healthy bunch of, of volunteers. Um, and then on Wednesday, the eighteenth of June at noon uh in the Sharon Lawson Room, we'll be holding our annual members meeting. Now, I am hoping and I, I'm, I'm getting, if you've noticed, I keep saying this at board trustees things. Assuming you're all members of the Friends. So if you are a member of the Friends, you have received a save the date email from us. If you're not, we'd still love to have you there. So it's a good wave. It, it is a luncheon that we provide and then a walkthrough of, of, of a, a, an annual report of financial and also program information. So it's a good thing to be at. Um, we'll be electing officers uh for next year at that time. Um, so if you're a member, you get a, a, you'll get an invitation about a week to R S V P. If you're not a member, just let me know you'd like to come. We'd love to have you there. Um, as you know, we've been working on our strategic plan. The team is down now to that nitty-gritty part of writing measurable objectives for everything, which is the, it's kind of like getting the term paper done. And we're almost finished with it. So uh, it will not need to be pretended or approved at the annual meeting, but we will be giving, the board will be approving it. And I am hoping that we'll have a ready rollout by July first. Uh, we did at our April meeting, um finally, after about three months of working on it, we have updated and have a new mission statement that I wanted to read to you. Even collaborated with uh, with Anjane. We all pitched in and talked about it and made sure the, if you've, I'm sure you've sat around and read the Friends of the Library bylaws. Our mission statement was kind of all over the place. It was sort of cumbersome and not real clear. So we wanted to get something. A good mission statement is brief and to the point and says, this is what we do. So the new mission statement says, the mission of the Blount County Friends of the Library is to support and enrich library programs and strategic initiatives through fundraising activities of dedicated volunteers while fostering strong community engagement with the library. Basically, we do two things. We sell books to raise money for, for the library and we raise Friends members. Those are the two objectives that we do. So we kind of cleaned it up and made it a bit clearer. But the things we fund are programs in the library and strategic initiatives. Um, so if there's some far-reaching thing, and as, as we said, we're now collaborating, I think better, between the funding entities uh with the leadership meetings to figure out who exactly is responsible for what in terms of the needs of the library. So I'm, I'm real pleased about that. And the other thing that I don't know if you all know we've done, we've just um received our mock-up of our new logo. And uh, our logo has never gone with the library logo. It's looked like they had nothing to do with each other. So we went back to Visual Voice, which is who did the library logo. And they have created a really clever design that has books in it. Uses the same color palette and uh says who we are. So we're gonna be unveiling that in the next few weeks too. So that's it.
Good, thank you much. Well, Liz, are you available for your report?
Hello, I am. I'm so sorry. Um, I'm coming to you from Madisonville on location. Anjane spoke about um Kim Hicks, the library director there, who's gonna retire. They had a board meeting right before yours. And so uh, she was talking about how excited they are to come and see the library. So I'm excited that they're gonna get to do that. They're a level three library um in Monroe County, one of four libraries in Monroe County. So that's exciting for them to get to come and see what you all are doing there and all your great things you're doing. Um, and thanks to, thanks to Greg for coming to the board chair meeting. Um, Greg, I'll have you perform your Elizabethan fare next time. I did not know that about you. So that's good to have in my pocket. Very good to know. So I shared um our uh board report uh beforehand. So we continue to offer training opportunities for our library directors and library staff, especially as we get toward the end of the fiscal year and folks are trying to get all of their required C E in. Um, we had an excellent session with Cindy Matthews on community engagement and partnerships on May the sixth. Um, she is the assistant director at the Stones River Regional Library, which is out of Murphysboro. And she did a really great job. Um, we are looking forward to hosting free marketing and graphic design tools. That session will be on May twenty-ninth. Um, and our staff is putting that on. Um, just wanted to send a reminder out to our libraries about their access to Read Squared, that software, um, which is free to all of our libraries. Um, you all have already covered your board appointment lists and you're doing great on that. So thank you for being right on top of that and getting that done. Um, the library service agreement uh I sent to Greg. So we um will get that signed and get that on to the state library and archives for final signature. That is one of three annual documents that our office circulates. We have the annual library service agreement, which is basically the agreement between the county library board and the state um for the library to receive regional services. And it outlines what, what we will provide to you all and then what we ask in return. Um, then of course, we have the M O E, which will come out um probably around August, July or August, and the O S A P, which is the Official Service Area Population. And that should be coming out uh soon. We have a lot of deadlines coming up. And I always tell the libraries, please do not be mad at me because I did not set these deadlines. I know it's summer reading program and it's a crazy time right now. But it's also the end of the fiscal year. So um, we have a reminder here about our libraries um completing the Title VI information. That is the training of all staff members as well as the online survey and the certification form. Um, the training must be done by June thirtieth. The self-survey by August first and the Title VI form by August the first. Um, so we'll be talking with you all about that and sending more information out, of course. Um, I also just wanted to let you all know, we talk about the state standards for public libraries often and share those analysis with, analyses with you um when they're finished, usually in the fall. Um, the annual survey is coming up and it is open at the moment. And it will be, the deadline to complete that standard survey is July fifteenth. That time reporting period will be for the, this current fiscal year. Um, so the twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year. Um, we have made some updates to the twenty eighteen version that was published. Nothing major, just mainly clarifications. Um, provide, reflecting any updates, providing clarity. We are not going to be publishing those, any paper copies of those any longer. They will live online um for ease of access, but also for ease of updating. So just wanted to let everybody know about that. Um, and then you all, of course, received the trustee workshop, save the date flyer reminder again. Um, we host four of those workshops statewide so that all library board members are able to attend um one somewhere. The one that we co-host will be held on September twenty-fifth at the Art Circle Public Library in Crossville. That is, they are on central time. I, I will repeat that multiple times because we are over here in the east, we're on eastern time. Um, so um, we have not started registration for that event yet. When we do, I will be sure to let you know. But just so you have that save the date for September twenty-fifth. And then you all had the Reads, the Regional eBook and Audiobook Download System Circulation Stats. Blount County, of course, did fantastic as they always do with very large circulation in April of twenty-two thousand seven hundred and nineteen circs. So kudos to you guys and thanks for continuing to promote that program. And I think that's all I've got.
Thank you, Liz.
You're very welcome.
Next, we have the Urban Committee Department for Social Skills. We've already done that earlier. On whole business, we have the Public Comment Policy.
I make a motion, we approve the Federal Comment Policy.
So, and first and second, discussion on the policy. Yeah, any, any further comment or discussion on the policy? Here and done, we have a first and second. Uh, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the policy was passed. Uh, then we got the hot, the hotspot policy. This has been going on for a little while about pricing for, for checking out the hotspot for people who do not have in-house. The hockey puck essentially.
Yeah, it kind of looks like, yeah.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve this policy?
I mean, approve. They have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Then really fast. I did, um, it's not on this one since this was going to approval and it was already in the packet. I did not put, I didn't update physical copies that you already had. Um, but on the digital copy, I updated it. We added um, on the first page, under understands and agrees to follow all the policies of each respective party, which prohibit pirating, illegal downloads, viewing, child pornography, et cetera. Followed this link to, and then there's a link to the Verizon Acceptable Use Policy. We also added, or by copying the following into your internet browser. And it has the address. And so that's for Verizon, there's one for T-Mobile, and then one for the B C P L Internet Safety Policy. So that, that's all that was changed, but that was changed or added.
Just out of curiosity, how many do we, how many do we have? How many hotspots do we check out?
On average, is that what you're asking? On average, or?
How many devices do we have to check out?
Right now, we're going to twelve T-Mobile devices and I believe we have about fifteen Verizon devices.
And how often are they?
They're regularly checked out.
Are they? I was curious.
Yeah.
Okay, we have, we have the first and second motions, any further discussion? Kind of amend that slightly, but have these comments that some were just mentioned, so the changes. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you for working on this. This is a, this is a difficult one.
No, you're welcome. Oh, thank you.
So much for Carrie, so that's. D R S sickly, the cruel thing. We have Justin Ball's comments at the first and visiting. Thanks for the information. Is there a discussion on this policy? Thank you, come back for the next panel.
I just had one correction on that there was two nots in that types of library programs include but are not, not limited to.
With the programming policy?
I had programming policy.
Oh wait, are we talking about the resolution?
We have got there first. We're talking about, we're talking about. We had, we had got there first. We're talking about, we're talking about the D C R S, uh, sickly.
For our justice.
What we need to do on the sickly?
This, this resolution is ready for you guys to vote on and approve if you feel like you've had, it has been vetted. This resolution came from Justin Ball. So legally, it is everything that, um, we need to do as an entity to enact and all we have to do is sign it. It has been reviewed by the H R department for the county and it has been reviewed by the finance department and they are both in agreement in it. So if you guys are ready to vote and sign tonight, it's ready to do that. If you're not and you have questions, please let us know so we can get those to the right people.
You already answered my questions. We didn't start it there.
Yeah, and, and this just, since I'm on a different part, part of the state, this just kind of pulls us in, un- under the, um, the umbrella, the, the, the rest of the state.
Well, there's no incentive for them to, or, or, which didn't make a whole lot of sense. So no, well, this is great. So thank you. This is a real benefit for our lawyers.
Absolutely.
So we have this resolution. So we have a motion to approve. I move that we, we approve it as, as, um, presented, presented by Justin.
Second.
Second. I'll take a further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Very well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do this, now we go to the library program. You know, what's, uh, alleged, uh? Oh, two nots. You want to strike a not. This will be?
For next.
For next. Okay, so this is for reference only and we will vote on the next. Then we have the fiscal year twenty-twenty-six Friends Funding Request. Leading up to one million dollars. How about Justin funding?
Okay, so those books. So, um, just to give you a little bit of backstory about this, um, what is it? This is the annual funding request, request. Those of you who have been on the board before have seen something like this. What is it? Uh, prior to this meeting, we meet with, um, the Friends. We have to loosely review in case there's something like, we don't like that number, this is making us nervous. You know, you need to be able to defend that, et cetera, et cetera. When we met, um, the input we got was to make sure we added the proof and editing for the writer and resident program, which we did. We, um, I had mistakenly missed one off, which is the not a bag and screen printing. We talked about that. They encouraged that we add it and that's what we're gonna do. That's a mini-con event that will be taking place next to the director's table. And, um, the P R team is kind of manning that one. And then best friends ever, they're like, well, have you considered inflation? You need to increase this. And we're like, oh no, say it's not so, okay? And so we went back in and we made the increases that they requested that we did. And so this is the final, um, recommendation that we have for the board. Each department reviewed the line items and adjusted those figures to what they thought was appropriate for the needs of those programs. Um, I don't believe the only items that were taken out were monday.com. And the reason was because the quote-unquote deal was that the Friends of the Library allowed the P R team to explore whether or not this work management software would be appropriate for what we needed and then it would become a library operation license. And that's what it's done. We have had monday.com for two years. It has just changed our P R. We are organized. We know where our information is. We've got the support and communication channels streamlined. So it is why our public relations has moved to the next level. And that's because, um, the Friends allowed us to explore this technology and it is making things happen. So thank you for that. So that has been removed. Um, the Friends also know that there may be a later request in the year because with Dustin coming on board, um, and there's the discussion and the exploration of the library space audit as well as strategic planning, that there may be additional requests. But that wasn't what was needed to be put in here. So that strategic planning request was removed and so was the library spaces because we didn't want to rush that. Other than that, everything else is pretty much, I don't think there's anything new on here.
We kept trying to come up with ways to get a few more monies.
So to reiterate, then these are pretty, are, are recurring program requests. So there's not, so you're just out on a change from last year's request?
Yes, sir. The only thing that is new is the not a bag and the screen printing. And that is because it is kind, so it is the second to the last line admin, or A D M three fifty for five thousand dollars. Uh, we provided a breakout in our initial discussion and that's basically the purchasing of the bags. And the P R team is going to be screen printing them on site, um, after some training. We did that for the Cormac McCarthy Literary Festival a few years back and the public really enjoyed it. These, uh, not a bags, they are a little bit more expensive than what we would typically offer. However, they are a ripstop fabric that, um, can fold down to a pocket-sized, um, little pouch that a mom can put or a dad could put in his back pockets. A mom can put three in her bag. And then when the littleies are going through, we can hold up to thirty-three pounds. Hopefully mamas aren't gonna be loading their kids up that much, but you know, we're all for health as well, so. What is it? Uh, so when we, we shared this initiative, the other thing is, is it really will promote our new brand. Um, and then we've got plans of how we're gonna roll this out each year. Um, so we're excited about it. And that was the only new thing.
So Vandy, are you, I don't know how much headroom you have in your budget given the future potential request for the space and the strategic plan to important things. Is there sufficient headroom to cover those or, or would there be great space?
We would not be funding space. That would be other groups probably. Uh, we would be assisting with them. Uh, yes, uh, uh, we, we have lots of assets right now. We're very good at what we do. And as a matter of fact, in cleaning up our mission statement, it was to make sure that we're focused and we're staying in our lane, not that we were gonna give less money. So, uh, yeah, we're, we do well. I mean, we're making, we're clearing between eighteen and twenty thousand dollars at, per sale. And, um, eBay is making anywhere from eight to twelve thousand a month, so. Through cash cow.
I just wanted to make sure we didn't have any discussion on trade space in the event that we had to make additional space for future requests.
So, um.
So, well, that's good.
Yeah. When you're talking about space, are you talking about space or are you talking about?
I'm talking budgets, trade space, the budget.
Budget space, budget space, yeah. It should, yeah. Space, space, but when you say space around a member of the Friends, we kind of get alert.
Funding.
If for some reason, if for some reason you all or the county ever says y'all gotta get out of the, the basement, which I don't ever anticipate happening, but if that happened, we'd, we'd be done. We were able to do this because the county gives us the space.
Okay, uh, let's see, let's.
Make a motion.
Make a motion to approve the funding request.
Right.
Second. Further discussion, questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Now, I didn't ask, but there's only ten thousand five hundred dollars asked for the concert series. Is the concert on July twenty-fourth, is that, is that gonna have, is that gonna have enough to cover? We have some meetings here and this is kind of a sort of a personal question I have just to o- open up the board. We have like three or four meetings a month that I would certainly not like to have to go to all of them. If we can share the load, if someone would like to go to the Friends or, uh, uh, it's not, we can just kind of move around. But I, I don't want to get stuck with feeling like I have to attend this. Sometimes I'll be in town or whatever.
I'll, I'll go to Friends.
Having said that.
This week.
And Stephanie's gonna go to the Foundation meeting tomorrow. No, Friday. That's on Fridays, Thursday, Thursday, Thursday. That's for twenty-second. And I'm gonna probably go to Vandy's meeting on Friday. My wife's having surgery tomorrow, so I don't know, let's see. If I get a kick out of it in time, I can take a go, so. Anyway, we don't have to decide this tonight. We could just be thinking about it the next month until there are meetings to pop out for someone.
Hey, I'm on to go to all the commission meetings.
Okay, so I think that's all we have that's worth anything. Uh, listen, there's no, there's no meeting in July, so we have that in mind. The next library meeting is June seventeenth, which will be Stephanie's last meeting. So we'll have pizza. Anybody have anything else that we failed to mention? So.
Anjane, this is for you. The staff just really wanted to say thank you, that you have just been wonderful and we have appreciated all that you have. All that you have done for us during these past six months and we wouldn't be where we are without you. And thank you for all the time and energy and soul and heart and everything that you have put into this. We really appreciate you.
And how on snow days?
So glad you're here. I asked Dustin yesterday, I was like, uh, so how was the first day? It's like, and I was like, you coming back tomorrow? I'm like, alright.
Good answer.
I joked, uh, I wanna say thank you to, um, I'm trying not to get emotional here. I could not, I could not have done it this time without the support from the staff. I had some personal stuff that had just kneecapped me. And at no time did I feel alone. The board had my back. The staff had my back. And I could not have done any of it without you guys. So personally, it just means the world to me. Um, and, um, it has been a pleasure and I'm so glad you're here. And, uh, as I'm sure every, everyone is, thank you very much. I'm gonna read this by myself because there will be some blubbering and red face and moisture. You know, it needs to see that. I am excited about what our future holds and, um, we've got an incredible staff, an incredible library, and I am so honored to be part of it. Um, and, you know, we could do the interim again in twenty-five years. Yeah, because we'll both be retiring at that time. Yeah. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, Anjane. It means a lot to me.
Okay. Nothing else?
I move to dismiss.
Second, dismiss, second. All those in favor, stand up.